A call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
And McGlashan?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
You have a statement?
Read.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 26th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may sign in electronically at the kiosk located in the back of the room.
Okay. With that, would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we are ready for our first item.
For your first matters, you have your consent items 1 through 35, and you also have addendums, items number 1 and 2. Addendum item 1 is a resolution recognizing Deborah J. Morrow upon the occasion of her retirement after more than 36 years with the county of Sacramento. For addendum item number 2, you have a resolution congratulating Lori Moss upon the occasion of her retirement from the Sacramento County. Also on the addendum is a closed session item for one potential case. For item number 27, you are introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16.91, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program. You're waiving full reading and continuing to March 8th for adoption. And that's all that I have for clerk's notes.
Okay. We do have two people signed up to speak on item 12. And now I'll ask other board members if anyone has any item they wish to pull or have questions on Mr. Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I have a question on item 3. It could, no, maybe just the short version of that item, not read the whole thing.
Okay, so item number 3, these are actions necessary to increase the number of beds in the jail-based restoration to competency program at the Rio Consumables Correctional Center.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And clerk, just my question is, on page 4 of the report, I'm supportive of this, I think this, again, is indicative of some of the work we're doing, certainly to better serve folks who are incarcerated and meet the needs, both mental health, but also other aspects of hopefully helping them to corrective action when they're released. But the question is, on the bottom of page 4, I know we've had some discussion in the past about the extending the same restoration of competency services for misdemeanits, and it just mentions here that an MOU is being developed, and that's been in the works for many, many months. And I guess I'm curious of the status of that, where we are with Sacramento Sheriff's Department and DHHS on that.
Yes, Supervisor Natoli, that, those discussions are progressing. We want to wait to make sure that this project is working, this program is working at RCCC for the felons before we initiate the misdemeanits, just so we can work out the bugs, so that the Department of Mental Health is okay with certifying this as an appropriate program for that purpose. We think we'll be able to bring that to the board probably by the end of March, that MOU.
Okay, so this is going to be an immediate implementation, so when you say what you, as you just explained, Paul, that you will have enough of a track record at that point in time to actually be back to us next month?
Yeah, the Director of Mental Health, the Deputy Director of Mental Health will simply go out and watch how the staffing is working with those clients. It's not a real intense review that needs to occur, they just need to make an onsite review to see how that program is staffed and working, so.
Okay, well, that's good news then. Okay, thank you very much.
That it. Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, one on item 26, if you'd call that.
Item number 26.
Is there someone from Transportation here? Oh, yeah, Mr. Schuman's here, okay.
Okay. Item number 26, authorize the Director of the Department of Transportation to execute Amendment Number 2 to the agreement with the NV5 for retroactive payment for professional engineering services on the Vineyard Road Bridge at Laguna Creek Project.
Thank you. Dan, my confusion on this item is that, not that the engineering company doesn't deserve to be paid, but it's the scoping and the general plan. It says in 2011, general plan was updated and designated as a two-lane road from the four-lane configuration. And so the scope was then amended to be consistent with the general plan, and then we went, then we changed it again. So I guess it has to do with when we scoped it. It's--
The original project was to construct a bridge that would accommodate a four-lane road, because at the time, the general plan designation for Vineyard Road was four lanes. After the project was initiated, at least during the design phase, the general plan designation for Vineyard Road changed from four lanes to two lanes. So we went back and made revision to the project to--
So we scoped the project as a four-lane--
Yeah, originally.
--a long time ago.
Yeah.
And that part, I don't understand either. I mean, it's, it's like a four or five years ago.
Yeah, and the bridge project itself, going all the way back to its initiation, environmental and design phase, was originally going forward as a four-lane project. And it was during that process that the general plan designation was changed.
Okay, I understand that part, I just don't understand why it was so long ago and why we wouldn't have known the scope had changed before we put the project out for bid. And then I also wanted to know, how about, I know we got some money a year ago, Don, for all the bridges out in your area?
Yeah, 37--
Are they all scoped, are they all in for four lanes, and now we're going to have to re-scope them?
No, that's not the case for all of them. This was just for this particular project, because of Vineyard Roads changing. But the change to, from the four-lane to the two-lane was the first amendment on this consultant agreement. And that was back in 2011 that we did that amendment. So that was a prior amendment that changed the scope from four lanes to two lanes. So that was before we put this out to construction. This amendment before you today is, there were some additional changes that occurred during the construction that required the consultant's support services, and because of the fact that the project, we didn't want to delay the progress of construction to deal with the changes to the consultant agreement, we went ahead and directed them to proceed. So that's what this amendment before you today is covering, is just those, there's about $15,000 worth of changes for construction support that occurred last season, last construction season, before the project was finished.
I mean, of course, what's catching my attention is, it's 22.5% over budget. And that's what grabbed my attention at first. And I'm just trying to get a sense of, which I still don't have, of the timing.
Well, that was the total of all the amendments.
Well, to a point, it is the total so far.
Yeah. The first amendment was about 18%, and that was the one that had the change in scope from four lanes to two lanes. So that was a major change, because of the change in the scope, that was a more significant change in the cost for this particular contract.
So the scope, the scope problem was 18%, and now we're at 22, so it's really, what you're saying is, it's only, only 4.5% over budget?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the first amendment had a budget change of 18%, and then this one changes it by about another 4%.
This is the thing I've been asking about for a couple of years here, about projects like this, that, you know, give an impression that we're over our budget, because the, I mean, I think that the staff report needs to change, and it shouldn't say 22.5%, it should say 6.5% or 4.5%, whatever it is. It's, if you change the scope on a project.
Maybe I can help too, because I think your point's well-taken, Susan, is that this, again, going back into the, you know, mid part of the last decade, 2005, '06, and '07, and we had a number of community meetings regarding this, and certainly Supervisor Yee and obviously Supervisor Kennedy upon the completion was involved, but we talked about the, you know, the road between Calvine and Gerber, you know, whether it was going to be two-lane or four-lane, and necessity for that. And so then the bridge was moving forward, and they were using the general plan. And then, actually, this board had some hearings regarding that, and that did contribute to the change in scope, because we actually had to amend the general plan, we had to initiate that, we had community meetings, and we have folks here in this audience advocating that it ought to be two lanes with pedestrian accommodations and so forth. And so, in doing that, though, then we incurred the cost, because they proceeded under the, you know, under the direction that they had on the general plan, and then that got changed. And yet, it reflects here, as you said, a 22%, when actually it was a decision that we rendered, that I think, you know, obviously reflected the community's interests, and, you know, has a nice bridge--
I'm not arguing that.
No, I know. I agree with you, yeah, yeah.
It's just that I find it very confusing to--
It doesn't--
--and misleading.
Yeah, you don't have that background. I think that's, I think to your point, I agree with you, that they don't, maybe--
I guess the reporting of this shows really the changes since the original contract, even though the first one was approved by the board and really is today what the, you know, what the actual budget is for it, so.
Nine years transpire, nine years, yeah.
The point.
Really, the only change is about 3.59% for this change order today.
Hopefully, you can understand why it's confusing.
Yes.
To a non-engineer, which is what most of the bus public is.
Did you have another question, Ms. Peters?
Yes, I do. Not for Dan, though.
By the way, bridge came out, it looks really nice.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that.
It's done.
The other question is on item 39, which I'd asked about, but the answer didn't come back quite--
39 is not--
Oh, was it a timed item?
Sent item.
Oh, I see, yeah, then I'll wait.
Okay.
I was looking at my computer, sorry.
That's okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, on this side, anyone have anything? Okay, then, my suggestion is that, since we have the two requests to speak on item 12, that we entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar, and then take up item 12.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, then can you please call item 12?
Item number 12 is the bid awards to Best Contracting Services and North Star Builders Group, job orders contracts numbers 125 and 126.
We have two requests to speak on this item. The first person is Darrell Paradiso, and then the second person is Jim Lang. Anyone else wishes to speak on an item, please fill out a speaker form, they're available in the back, or there's a kiosk in the back as well. Good morning.
Good morning. I have some documents I'd like to submit if possible. My name's Darrell Paradiso with King's Roofing. Excuse me, I'm not a public speaker. I'm here to appeal the response to the protest of job order contract 125 and 126 submitted on December 29th of last year. We believe the county did not follow written policies and procedures of the RFP process. The document's in front of you. Page 1 is the basis of our protest. Section 3.3, item 1, line D. Agency failed to follow written policies and procedures. If you follow on to page 2, to the notice of contractors, required bid license contracts to bid these contracts is a C-39. Page 3, also from the notice of contractors stating the award of the contract requires a valid California contractor's, excuse me, a little nervous, valid contractor license. Classification as identified above, license is also a C-39. Page number 4 states a specific type of license indicated in the notice of contractors, which is, again, a C-39, required at these projects. That is basis of our protest, and we don't feel that the county followed the written policies and procedures of these contracts.
Okay.
Quick question?
Thank you. Oh, question for you?
Yeah, Ms. Paradiso, so, and we had four firms that submitted bids on this, and there was, at least in our staff report, I assume we'll hear from staff once we've heard from the speakers on this, but that you're suggesting that the firm that's being recommended by staff to receive the JOC bid award, that they didn't have the proper licenses--
Correct.
--to conduct the work that was scoped out, is that, is that--
Correct. The RFP required a C-39 license to bid these contracts. And the, one of the notice to attempt to award to the bidders did not possess that license. These has a general license, which in turn, kind of turns the JOC process into a pass-through contracting process, meaning they're just a general--
And then they have a sub-performed that work, potentially, is that what?
Correct. The only C-39 roofing contractors doing the work, and they'd be passing through, allowing the subcontractor to mark up their proposal, passing through the general contractor, which they're to be allowed on this contract, 14% on top of submitting to the county, increasing the overall value to the, to the county, 30%.
The, and I trust you've had some conversation with staff, what was been the explanation offered to you? We have one in the staff report, so you don't have to recite that.
Yes, we submitted our official protest. They responded, it was a protest without merit, and if we want to appeal the process, they'll have to come here today and speak in front of you.
Okay, okay, good, thanks. You did a good job, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jim Lang.
Good morning. I'm Jim Lang with North Star Builders Group. We are a general contractor licensed by the state. And so during the pre-proposal conference, the required attendance with the, with the county, actually, I believe the subject was brought up about the use of a general. The basis of the bid is actually a factor, which probably let county staff comment on more specifically. But the result of that is that there is no change in price to the county as to the work. Our business model as a general contractor allows us to go out and compete multiple roofing contractors, C-39 licensed contractors, to do the work, and then we manage them professionally. We've used this successfully with the Department of Interior, with the Department of the Navy, and with the Air Force, and we've won awards for the quality and timely performance of our work. So we're pretty confident in our ability to perform and to do well. So we would actually, obviously, support the staff recommendation that you have before you, and recommend award at least with our firm. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have someone here from staff to address this item?
Yes, we do. Michael Morris.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Mike Morris with the Department of General Services. I have specific questions, or I can address this generally. The JOC, as it states in your board package, the general conditions do refer to the Division 3 of Business and Professional Code, which does not exclude a general contractor from bidding on this type of contract. Oftentimes, a construction, a regular construction contract might include requirements to submit your list of subcontractors. This does not, because it is an indefinite quantity contract, so, but it does not exclude general contractors from bidding on this. We will require that list of subcontractors as the particular job order agreement is issued. So this was, we found this protest without merit, because it was allowed under the general conditions of the contract.
Are there any questions for Mr. Morris? Mr. Serna, actually, has signed up first, and then Mr. Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, the previous speaker, I believe, made mention of a bid conference where some of this was explained verbally. That is the nuance of the general contractor's ability to, to compete here. Were both parties, the gentleman from King's Roofing, was he also part of that?
Let me refer to staff. Ed Go is my JOC master. Were they both?
My name is Edward Go. I'm the Job Order Contracting Program Coordinator. Yes, that's correct, the pre-bid conferences are mandatory in order to bid these JOC contracts.
So the appealing party was present?
Correct.
Okay.
Both King's Roofing and North Star.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Natoli.
Yeah, I want to be clear, because the information that Mr. Paradiso submitted here, again, it wasn't included in our packet, because it was the notice that was sent to contractors. And so the portion he has highlighted, you don't have this for you, but it says contractors California licensed and slash/or class required. And then it says to the right of that, C-39 roofing. So do I understand the point here, that you're required to have either/or or both as a part of this in order to bid? So, because again, if it's, if it's or, then if you, what you're saying there is that you have a contractor's, California contractor's license, and C-39 roofing, I guess, would be preferable. So I guess I want to be clear, so what, what this called for?
The either/or is, does allow for general contractors to bid the contract. On a specific job order agreement, once that, once that job is issued to them, they would have to have the appropriate licensed subcontractor to conduct the work.
Okay, so, and is that explained? I guess, you know, you just had, had up here, but, you know, again, we, we have him, and we have this Gordian group that assists us with this, I guess, to going out for a job. So do you, when you have somebody in the bidders conference, and whether it's the gentlemen that are here today on behalf of their firms or anybody else, is that, you know, beyond, obviously, the written part is very important, but is it explicit that you have to, you can have a, be a general contractor to bid on this, or you can, you know, have a specific, now, in this case, the roofing contract? And would the roofing contractor have been able to perform all the other work?
No. They would only be able to conduct the work for which they're licensed.
So, let's just take, hypothetic, but, so if King's Roofing was, was selected, and they only held the C-39-- they only held the C-39 roofing contract, then they could only do roofing work under the JOC?
I believe.
Or could they go and get a, a general contractor to be their sub?
I was going to say, they, they could probably act as, do the specific work on a, on a roofing contract, but they would have to sub out other work that is not within their, within their licensing. So, they would end up acting as a general as well.
It's a little bit confusing to me. I don't, I'm not in this business, but, so, it just says, you, that leaves it pretty open-ended, I guess, Mike, is that, you know, so you can have a contractor who holds only a specific license and/or a general, and so, so if we require it, we ought to require it, and then we give ourselves the and/or, and then we end up with a bid protest. I guess truly, if it is an and/or, then that's, you know, then that's what it is, but I could see where, you know, whether you were a contractor, you know, in either, either realm, that I guess, you know, that would be, you might send a mixed message, because it said, so, so why is, do we specify the C-39 roofing, then? We say general contractor, why don't we just go for general contractors, then? If they all, they can sub it out anyway, they could hire King's or anybody else to do the work, I guess, if they didn't hold their own license, right?
No.
Doesn't put them at a disadvantage if you're, hold a specific license?
Not sure I have a real good answer, if I can, Ed, or if I can, Stephanie, maybe help me out here?
Madam Chair, if I could suggest, let us huddle on this question, bring it back at 2:00 PM.
Okay.
Good morning.
Excuse me, the county executive just suggested that we bring this back at 2:00 PM, when we have chance to sort this out, and we do have other timed items that are now behind schedule, so.
Yeah, maybe a little explanation behind the mechanics of how this works. I mean, again, I guess, I think I'm understanding this, again, I don't mean to hold it up this morning, Madam Chair, I just, it, it seems to me, though, that, you know, there's a good deal of work here that's, you know, at stake, and you've got contractors, obviously, they're eager to do the work and, and perform, but I do think having a little more explanation behind this would be, would be useful, whether it's 2:00 or a couple of weeks or whatever, but.
We'll go back at 2:00.
If everyone could, and associated with this, could please return at 2:00 PM, and we'll take the matter back up at that time. So, now we can proceed with item 36.
Yes, ma'am. Item number 36 is the resolution to participate in neighborhood transformation partnership at the Lea Tata Floyd Elementary School, and to appoint Supervisor Phil Serna to represent the Board of Supervisors on the NTP leadership team.
Okay, good morning.
Hi, thank you for having me, Supervisors. My name is Jody Mulligan-Fyle, and this is Larry Best. I work for Valley Vision, which is a, a local nonprofit community development consultancy. Larry Best is here, he is present, he is representing California Emerging Technology Fund. We'd like to start by thanking Supervisor Serna, and Paul Lake, and Nav Gill for helping us to navigate through this process and coming to a resolution on a resolution that works for the students and families of Lea Tata Floyd Elementary School. Currently, Valley Vision and myself, we are working at Lea Tata Floyd Elementary School on a project called School to Home, where we are bringing computing technologies into the classrooms of the students. There are currently 318 at the campus, and what this is doing is it's allowing us to sort of create a centerpiece to work with the families of the students at Lea Tata Floyd Elementary. And just a little bit, in case you are not aware, all of the students that currently go to Lea Tata Floyd Elementary either live in Marina Vista or Alder Grove, which is half of SHRA's housing portfolio, or they live in Land Park Woods, which is run by Mercy Housing, or they're homeless. So, essentially, what we're wanting to do now is to create a neighborhood transformation partnership, where we can affect the lives of the families of the students at Lea Tata Floyd Elementary, and then also start to work with the residents of Marina Vista Alder Grove. Did you want anything to that?
As Jody said, I'm Larry Best, I'm with the California Emerging Technology Fund, and we're very excited about this opportunity. We're investing in Valley Vision and School to Home, and as Jody said, neighborhood transformation is, or I should say, School to Home is the centerpiece of neighborhood transformation. And I just want to thank Supervisor Serna for your leadership in bringing this before the board, and thank Paul Lake and his staff. We've, we've already had an initial meeting to think through what the specifics are for the planning process, and we're ready to go, so we really appreciate your support in approving this resolution, and Supervisor Serna, your leadership in pulling together the leadership team to make this happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any? Does anyone else have any?
I'm, I'm going to move the staff recommendation. Before we vote, Madam Chair, though, I'd just like to extend my thanks to both Valley Vision and the California Emergency Technology Fund for your partnership on this.
Thank you. Second. Okay, please vote.
Ms. Peters? Didn't realize she wasn't here. And the motion passes with Supervisor Peters being absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Item 37 is the online campaign disclosure filing services project report back and recommendation to implement Phase 2 requiring online disclosure filing effective by August 1, 2016.
Okay, Ms. Levine, are you making the presentation?
Just a real quick, short one. Just good morning, 105 days to the next June election. So, it was a year ago today that I was here in front of your board, and described Phase 1, requesting your approval of a contract to start this process. And filing online really helps to ease the burden for the elected official, candidates, and others who are required to submit their documents to the FPPC, and eliminates a lot of the handling of the documents by our office, and it increases the public awareness to the disclosure documents. In Phase 1, it was optional whether they, if a candidate or campaign wanted to do it, and they filed, they could file online, but they were still required to submit a paper copy. Phase 1 included two filing periods, and the first one covered from January to June, and at that point, we had 35% of our filers filing online, including all board members, and two of the three county-wide elected offices, and 65% chose to vote, still file with paper. The second reporting period in Phase 1, we increased, we had now 54% of those filing filed online, and that was all members of the board, all three county-wide offices and elected officials, and only 40% of those filed by paper. So, we have improved as we go through. All comments from the filers were positive. They said it was easy, it was convenient, it reduced errors, very intuitive, and the public likes it. Since September of 2015, we've had over 4,000 hits on our website, and we've had 54% fewer requests for copies of these documents. So, the testing of Phase 1 was successful. It was free of charge to the filers and the public viewing, those in the public that viewed it, the correct redaction of the forms for public viewing, and it had the electronic signature capability. Phase 2, if we can move to Phase 2, it will require the candidates and campaigns to file using the online disclosure system, if they spend over 2,000, spend or receive over 2,000 in their campaigns. That will include the Board of Supervisors, special districts, school district, county-wide offices, but the paper copy will no longer be necessary. If an individual's filing for a city office or a state office, they file respectively with that city or with that, or with the state. So, I'm here today to ask the board to direct our office to move forward and implement Phase 2. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments for Ms. Levine? Mr. Natale?
Yeah, thanks, Jill. Just on the point about displaying those, that are supposed to be displayed correctly, and all fields required to be redacted are correctly redacted, what, what are the specifics behind that?
If you put any information online, your social security number, your, I think it's address, different things will not go online, so those things are redacted, so.
What goes online? Maybe that's.
Yeah, maybe.
What goes online, and I will have to ask.
I like, name and amount.
Pardon?
Name and amount.
Names and amounts, mhm.
Okay, so, so what about addresses for, you know, every campaign committee has a mailing address, you know, obviously, sometimes there's home addresses for candidates, depending upon the nature of the office and so forth, and so, what is redacted, then?
What is redacted? Karen, this is Karen Startup, she's the Campaign Service Manager, is very involved in this.
And if you need to stand between the two microphones to speak, so we can hear you, please. The, basically, with the Net File, it's just the, the information's missing, it's not, it's not really, like, redacted, in a sense, it's just not there when you file electronically. So, your residence address, your phone numbers, all that kind of thing, it's, just, just really has your name, and then people who contribute, and if they wouldn't have their addresses or anything, would just have their name, how much they contributed.
Okay, because that's, but the addresses are required, actually have a physical address, it's not a P.O. box, so all that has to be included in the report, so it's, that's still recorded, reported in the filing, it's kept on record for you and the Secretary of State, but it's not what is retrievable. Now, if you get a hard copy of the report, you can go get that today, because that's what's on the hard copy report.
Correct, but when you file electronically, what the public would see from their home or on the computer going on our website would be the missing information. If they wanted to see the, all the information, they would still come to our office to view that.
Okay, so that, so it is, it is on file, again, it is issued appropriately, that's, that's what's required by law, but to view it from home, then, it's just the contributor, the amount, and then basic information about the campaign treasurer, the candidate or committee, and what about the, the numbers as it relates to, you know, because there are totals, there are many pages, depending upon the nature of the, with your 460 forms, you can have, you know, multiple pages of expenditures, of receipts, depending upon the campaign season and so forth.
Right. It's all there, and the wonderful.
I know it's all there, because that's what you have to submit. I mean, so, so what's, what's there for those that view it from home, though?
Everything is there, except you're just missing the addresses, the phone numbers, things like that, but all, everything that anybody contributes, the dollar amounts, all that kind of thing. The summary page that shows their beginning balance, ending balance, their expenditures, their contributions, any of that is all there. You're just missing the addresses, so just that kind of thing is missing, and the phone numbers. Signature, the wet.
Signature, signature for campaign treasurer and for the candidate or the committee head.
Exactly.
Those are, those are redacted.
Would have been good to have an example up on the screen.
Well, if we went on our website, we could probably see it, but that is a good idea, but.
Yeah, you're making the presentation, so that would have been a good idea.
Okay.
But it's, it's still a, the great thing about it is also for the treasurers and also for the candidates, you know, you're having to get the candidate to sign this thing, you know, having to sign the form, now having it electronically, once it's submitted by your treasurer, it's, it's done, you're already filed and everything, and if there was an issue or anything, you can do an amendment immediately, and, but it's, it goes up there immediately, once they hit submit.
I did want to ask you about that, so, again, having been at this for a long time, you know, you get a wet signature each and every time, you know, twice a year, and during campaign season, you get four, four shots at it. So, there's no longer going to be a requirement for a, not just a wet signature, but then, you know, the signature's on file, and so the campaign treasurer will file the information, assuming, obviously, the candidate or the committee chair, whoever has reviewed that, but in, you know, up until this, you know, this current filing, through this current filing, it's required a, a wet signature, so it's required, certainly reviewed by the candidate and/or the parties that are signatory to the committee structure. That's no longer required, so the treasurer or assistant treasurer can file that, and then the, it's presumed that the parties that, you know, head the committee and/or the candidate has authorized that, no longer requires, there's no, there's no recordation, though, of a, of a wet signature, and that, that is a difference. I mean, it's one thing electronically, and it may still have the same force and effect, but right, right now, the way it's required is that it's required that, and so that, that basically, that's, that meets the law, the requirements under the law?
Yes.
Interesting.
Yeah, it is. And so, but, but in essence, I guess, you know, I mean, there's this risk, because the receiving parties, the registrar voters doesn't know, treasurer could file that, it's under secured account and so forth, but, and the candidate or committee chair could never have looked at that, you, because, you know, right now, it requires at least verification, at least a signature, whether they look at it or just to sign it.
Well, the, the treasurer can send you a PDF of it prior before submitting, so you could review it before they hit submit, and submit it.
That's not my point, that's my point, Karen. My point is, is that when you receive it, though, you know, the whole idea was that the candidate or the committee head would, you know, have authorized this as being factual and being a correct reflection of that. Now, you know, certainly the burden still falls to the candidate or to, you know, to the parties that are required to file, but you, you know, the receiving end of this doesn't know whether they, that took place or not. I mean, the treasurers can be at a remote location, some folks have firms that do their, do their work.
So, someone could send in a phony report?
Potentially.
That's not affiliated with the campaign?
Well, potentially, you get a secured account, there's ways, you know, there's some, some firewalls there, but, but again, it doesn't require any wet signatures, so you don't know that, if somebody actually has witnessed that, which, again, maybe in this day and age, that doesn't matter as much, but this, you know, that's pretty important stuff.
Well, everyone gets a password, so when they, when you first open a 410 and do it, we, it triggers a password, and we send that to the treasurer, then the treasurer will make a new password, they get a temporarily password, and then they submit their own password. So, they, they, when they start, they'll do a brand-new password and everything, a login and password for them, they can do on their own, for when they go initially, and they're the very first time.
I guess my, my point is, though, is that up and through now, it's required an actual signature, a signature both of your treasurer or assistant treasurer, and the candidate or committee head.
Yes.
That no longer will be required, because you're going to have electronic on file, and the presumption is, is that the candidate or committee head and the treasurer, whoever, you know, because you can have a, you can designate somebody to give them the password and say, "Go file this," that it may not, you know, and again, I don't know if that presents, you know, because that's somebody else's problem, but sort of from the county's standpoint, you've kind of been a holder of those records, and there has been a, a, you know, a constant over the course of now, probably 40 years, recordation of people actually having signed that, and you, and you presume that that's the person's signature, but at least you have that. There's no longer that in the system.
Well, we have three options before that you presented to us. If, if the, a majority of the board wanted to continue to require a physical signature page, is that something that we could include in the ordinance?
Yes, if you, if you want to continue the way in Phase 1, that is fine, and that would still require a physical signature, but you could file online.
Okay.
So.
Madam Chair, just one question, so I guess, has that been problematic in any, I mean, are you aware, you're, certainly, you're knowledgeable, Jill, and Karen does, well, you know, has that been a problem, where you've had filings that have, how do I say, fraudulent, or maybe didn't have the proper oversight? No?
None. Alex, you have a comment?
I don't mean just here, but I mean elsewhere, in the, you know.
Okay, all right. So, no, and there are, there are 54 jurisdictions now that are using this company, and I have not heard of any even comments about that concern.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I guess my questions, to first, kind of go along with what Mr. Natale was saying, is this part of the website hack-proof? Is it under the typical county computer, keeping people's ability to change?
It is actually, the firm that we have contracted with, Net File, is holding this, so it's theirs.
And, and what do we know about their abilities?
In reviewing the contract with them, when we first started, it was extreme, you know, it passed all the security tests, so.
And it's, who at the county made that judgment? Who or how?
Who or how? The.
Is that our IT people took a look at it, or, or you did?
We, I looked at it, Net File presented it, and was DTech on that? I think, I think DTech was on that RFP with us.
And what?
DTech was on the RFP. We went, we went with them.
Okay. It's just, I, I think we're both kind of thinking about the law of unintended consequences, you know, something being able to be, that we haven't thought of now that could be changed. The other question I had is, I, I think I got an answer online, was this is just for Uh, the other question I had is, I, I think I got an answer online, was this is just for county offices? This is not for any city offices or school districts or border reclamation or anything else?
It is for county offices, it would include special districts, which are some school districts and border reclamation. But only if they meet that $2,000 threshold.
Yeah, a lot of them wouldn't. Okay, thank you.
Then we can send you a copy of what a redacted or a document looks like, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that'd be.
Okay, um, no one, no other board members are signed up to speak, no one from the public is signed up to speak. What is the pleasure of the board on this item?
I would move the item, I think that, again, you know, the trend certainly here, I, I, public disclosure obviously is important, and I certainly have had my questions answered here this morning. And, um, again, I just want to be sure of the security, and I'm sure obviously that's a concern of others. And, uh, but again, having the information available to folks who, um, you know, that's the whole idea of having some transparency. So I would support moving forward with phase two of the assurances that we've been offering here this morning, that there'll be, you know, some continued review of that. Obviously NET File's done doing this in fifty-four other counties throughout the state, and, you know, we're, you know, we're not out there on the cutting edge of this. And I think, I assume the security has been a concern in those areas as well, well, so, as well as transparency for public information, so, all right. I'd move the item.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number thirty-eight is the County Service Area Number Ten Benefit Zone Three Public Hearing on the Tabulation of Protest Ballots and Resolution Establishing a Service Charge Within the Gardner Park Project.
Ms. Drew Davison.
Good morning, Bob Davison with County Engineering. Um, if you recall, we were here a few months back with the tabulation of several protest ballot process for multiple subdivisions that were completing the annexation process to County Service Area Number Ten. And in the case of this subdivision, we opened for no ballots, and so your board was not able to adopt a resolution, um, establishing the service charges. Since that time, we've contacted the property owners, and they've indicated that there was some confusion on their side, and that they asked us to bring this back to your board. So today, um, all the other subdivisions at that time did go through the process, but today, um, we're bringing back the protest ballot process for the Gardner Park Project. So with that, I would recommend that your board direct the clerk to tabulate the protest ballots returned by the owners. And at this time, we know that there are four ballots returned, so I'm suggesting that the clerk open up the ballots, and we'll quickly calculate, um, the result and get it back to you right now rather than wait till two o'clock.
That's fine.
So we're pretty sure she can count to four if, uh, quickly?
We're, we're watching.
This is your test, Flo.
Everyone can observe the ballots being counted.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please. Suspense is killing us.
Okay, from the legal owners of Fung, Catherine, Hong, Vu, and Michael, the, is a no vote. And this is the legal owner George and Margot Ziskas Family Trust, this is a no vote.
What if you have a tie?
Um, it's weighted by assessment amount?
Okay.
So it's not likely that there will be a tie.
This is from the Massey Family Trust, this is a yes vote. Enter final. The legal owners, uh, Bang's Revocable Living Trust for Deborah Massey and Ricky Massey, this is also a yes vote.
So he calculates the weighted vote.
Well, being the county engineer, I can actually do that in my head.
You're the mathematician in there, you gotta count them more than four.
So with that, um, just to confirm, there's blanks in the resolution. So at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral or written protest, which the board has duly considered. Four protest ballots were returned, which represent a hundred percent of the property owners. Of those ballots returned, seventy-nine point six eight percent of the returned ballots are in favor, and twenty point three two percent are opposed.
Repeat the numbers again?
Yeah, the first number again.
Um, seventy-nine point six eight percent were in favor. And twenty point three two percent were opposed.
So that would be deemed to be passed, then?
That, that would be deemed passed, therefore there is no majority protest. And so therefore, it is recommended that the board adopt the resolution establishing a service charge for the Gardner Park Project within Benefit Zone Three of County Service Area Number Ten.
I have no one signed up to speak on the item, Mr. Kennedy?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, that, that was our suspense for the morning. Move on to the next item.
Okay, for your next item, item thirty-nine is the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District, Zone Four, the district restructure. I'll, I'll let them turn it on, they, they weren't ready.
Okay. Res Almagici, Department of Transportation, we're waiting for the brief PowerPoint slides.
And we're ready for the PowerPoint.
There's a lot of talking going on back there, I, they're looking for it.
We don't have that presentation.
Okay. Uh, do you have it available that you could use on the overhead?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do it old-school then.
We have a colored one here.
Very good.
Why don't you help?
Thank you.
Okay.
The item before you relates to the County Landscape Maintenance District. We're here today to get the authorization to hire a consultant to restructure the district, to create different zones and rates within the districts. The proposed restructuring of the district is not going to affect the current assessments, but it will pave the way for a rate increase in the future. The district provides landscape maintenance services along, um, major roads and, uh, medians, sidewalks, and open space. The scope of services benefit, um, about eleven thousand two hundred fifty residential parcels and a hundred ninety-one commercial acres in total. The district currently collects forty-two dollars and fifty cents per residential parcel and sixty-six dollars and fifty-one cents per acre for commercial properties. The total annual revenue is roughly about five hundred thousand dollars, and the total expenditure is about eight hundred thousand, so there's a gap between the revenue generated and the expenditure for services provided. This map depicts, depicts the, um, boundaries of the district. The district is one zone right now, and it consists of fourteen residential neighborhoods that are called out on this map. They are very small. The largest area is the Antelope area that's in the north, and it's been kind of boxed to show that the bulk of the services are provided in that, in that area. And the Antelope area also generates about ninety percent of the district's revenue. Now, all the commercial, all the residential properties within the, um, district right now pay that forty-two dollars and fifty, fifty cents. But the cost of providing services within those areas fluctuate significantly. And as a result, the assessment collected are not proportional to the benefits that are provided. And for that reason, that is an issue, that's a, a problem we need to address. And, uh, the proposed for restructuring, the district is intended to primarily address that issue.
Before you leave that slide?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
So up in the Antelope area, and it look, it's such a small-
Yes.
-slide, it's hard to see, but it looks like on Watt Avenue Number Two-
Yeah.
-there's some green areas.
Right.
What are those?
These, these are the three commercial areas that I mentioned, two of them are along Watt Avenue.
Well, are those, well, then what's the brown area? I mean, aren't those green dots on there?
Can, is it obvi- possible to zoom in on this?
They're green, so they're, they're green and brown, I just, what does that mean?
Thank you.
Okay. The brown color, um, refers to the commercial properties, the three that we, um, have called out on that slide. And also, uh, the green part, uh, it may be, uh, I, I'm not sure whether that signifies anything.
But there's quite a bit of it up in the Antelope area, which now we can't see on this slide.
Yeah.
Isn't that grass?
Right. Can you pull this slide down a little, there, thank you.
And there's, and, and on that area, there's, there's white areas, so is that undeveloped, or what does that mean?
Some of that green, I believe, is commercial also, just knowing the community.
Color and the brown?
Yes, Brett Rigger with-
We need you to speak into the microphone, please.
Brett Rigger with the Department of Transportation. This original slide was, uh, brought from an original district assessment map. Um, and what I recall is that the green area is a property that has been, uh, is part of the district and is exempted based on the type of property it is. Might be a, uh, commercial area or a, uh, school site or something that is exempted.
Well, commercial's not exempt.
No, but it, it may be, um, uh, and I'd have to go back and check, but I believe it is some sort of exempted property, and it just had showed in the original slide that was used to, to help put this together.
Susan, I believe that's, that's fast food and, and other, um, commercial on that-
Yeah.
It could also include, um, an apartment complex, a multifamily type of complex that is also, uh-
Not, not on that west side there.
Now it's been made small again, and so it's really hard to see.
We can certainly go back and find out what those properties are.
Is this something where if we want more information, is this something that could be held over for two weeks and?
Sure, certainly. Uh, what we're here today basically is to get the authorization to hire a consultant. The consultant is going to make recommendations on the creation of different zones and rates. And then we intend to bring it back for your consideration and approval before we can proceed with that. But in the meantime, we will provide, um, answer to the question that you had today.
Well, I also, I have a more general question, which maybe you can answer today, which is that what is meant by restructuring-
Okay.
-the district? I, that wasn't clear to me after reading, what is it that?
The restructuring, basically what we mean by that is to create different zones. We, right now, the district is only one zone, everybody, everyone pays the same thing, but services are provided at different costs in different areas. By restructuring it is that for us to create different zones and different rates, so that there will be that proportionality between benefits received and, and assessments collected.
Which is what is required under Proposition 218?
Prop 218, exactly.
To have a nexus, correct?
Yes, now-
That makes sense now.
Yes, so for any rate increase in the future, that's a must, that, uh, complies with Prop 218. And that's why what we are doing today will pave the way, as I mentioned, to consider a rate increase in the future.
Okay.
Because right now, we cannot do it with the existing configuration.
I understand, thank you. Uh, Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yeah, Res, um, we took this on probably, I don't know, a half dozen or more years ago with the streetlights. And we paid a consultant quite a bit of money, several hundred thousand dollars if I remember right, and went to actually a ballot and got trounced like eighty percent against it. And, uh, you're not asking for that today, you're asking for a consultant actually to prepare, I guess, this restructuring, and then for, for the presentation to, to the, to the board. I guess my, um, question, though, with that as background, you know, you're, you're showing that you're, you know, you're running, and again, this isn't anything new, you've had that three hundred thousand dollar shortfall for several years now. I mean, one, part of what that says to us, obviously, we need to watch for cost containment on the other side of it, and I think that's part of the concern you're going to get from folks, uh, you know, do we give you, even under Prop 218, do we give you a blank check for the maintenance and, you know, what level of maintenance? And I think generally, um, our contractors and certainly our, our county forces do a pretty good job of maintaining it, but, you know, replacement trees and, and such, and we've got a couple contracts that are actually follow this item, um, this morning. I guess my, my question is, though, so what's your sense of, because you said in the report that, uh, this shortfall, but the shortfall that you're seeing here is significant. And so how is a small increase going to make up that shortfall? Uh, that didn't really compete for me, when I'm thinking, all right, you're bringing in a half a million, and you're eight hundred thousand dollars even with cost containment, so a small increase isn't going to get you anywhere near that if in fact it's truly a small increase. I don't care how you restructure it, so.
Okay, uh, what we intend to do is, once the, the district has been reconfigured and different zones have been created, then we can develop a strategy that is going to look into that question, whether spending the money for a ballot protest procedure and, and, and public outreach and counting the votes and all that would, um, be worth the effort of putting the proposed increase in, you know, to vote. Uh, I think that right now, the disproportionality among the areas is so different. For example, in the Antelope area, if we go with, um, some modest increase, we will be able to make that, that district whole. In other words, try, we will be able to generate enough revenues to pay for the expenditure. Whereas other district, other zones may require a substantial increase in order to be able to, um, generate enough revenue to pay for the, for all the costs. So when it comes to those areas, we need to have a discussion as to what to do, whether to continue to, um, supplement the deficit using road fund or change the level of service or do more concentrated or more concerted effort on the public outreach in order to develop the support that you need for a higher increase. But, uh, right now, it's, it is not possible to come up with a different strategy for different parts of the, of the district.
I, I understand that, and again, you know, you look at the map, it's, you know, it's shotgun. But those were decisions rendered by this board as related to making sure that landscaping was provided for, that its maintenance, and, you know, and, yeah, it's all over the place.
Yes.
Uh, but, and that has some logistical challenges, and obviously that has probably some of the costs that get built into those perform the work as far as going from, you know, Rosemont to Fair Oaks Boulevard to Ann Lope to, you know, Orangevale, wherever it is that they're, they're traveling to. So I, I get that, but I, you know, these were conscious decisions, the district, yeah, has these bits and pieces. Actually, it was larger prior to, you know, the incorporations of, you know, a couple of the cities. But I guess I'm a little concerned, not that you shouldn't look at restructuring, I, I think this, obviously, we were going to embark on this effort, you know, nearly ten years ago now, and, and I think for good reason, we, we, we held off. But, um, I'm still, I'm a little puzzled in that you can look at it, but if you, you know, and not that maybe you shouldn't reflect true cost of doing that, but part of a district is that you get some spread. If you begin to zone it and you take care of one area, then you leave a whole lot of areas that are, you know, small parcels, but their frontages are important to be maintained, and that- and that's the obligation, one that this county placed on those properties. But we also took it on to maintain it, not that we couldn't ever revisit it or look to restructure it. I'm concerned, though, that you carve out the largest piece of it, potentially, and then you say, well, gosh, this costs us, you know, $100,000, $200,000 more, and we've only got, you know, at that point, you've got, you know, maybe a tenth of the, of the properties are still there, and so they're looking at assessments that are in the $40 range, but be looking at things that are $200 a year. I don't know. I just, you know, I'm concerned about kind of where we'd go once we embark on this, so.
But if we leave the largest area in place?
Yeah.
The weight they carry would not be enough to affect a successful ballot outcome. In other words, the disparity elsewhere is so great, that is, the increase within the large area would not be able to overcome.
Because you're, you're basically confirming my point, that it costs you more to do all those other 13 smaller locations, and whether on Watt Avenue or on, you know, on Jackson... And so, and again, I think that we should, you know, look at the antelope area, you know, you have ponders of those streets, and the properties are included. So again, I want to be fair about this, but I'm just, I guess, a little puzzled that we're going to open this up, and you know, we may go down a path that's going to, you know, get a lot of squawking from folks out in those other areas out there, because that's what you get in a balanced district, zoned or not, is that you're able to, you know, proportion those costs. Now, the road fund, you know, all the folks are picking that up through, to this contribution. You're going to potentially pick that off and say, you get 10% of the district still remaining, well, why should we contribute $200,000 of the road fund to take care of their problem? It may present as a different set of circumstances. I'm not going to try to over-anticipate where you're going to end up with this, when you have the consultant come in. But I, I kind of want to set that out there, at least in my thinking on this, is that that presents a bit of a concern.
Supervisor, that, that specific issue is embedded in this. You're seeing it coming correctly, I think. What we, kind of the underlying motivator for this is that the district has been out of balance for some time, and although we haven't gotten to the slides yet, because we kind of got into the middle of this thing, but there was some survey work that was done last year.
There's more slides.
That did kind of help inform this imbalance discussion. And the board won't be obligated necessarily to bite into that next piece upon the report back here as to, as the ability to create zones that, you know, that would be defensible under, you know, sort of a 218 process. And it's our hope that we can inform the, the opportunities for addressing the out-of-balance fee structure in portions of the district, as well as have the confidence that we'll be able to continue to fund the other portions of the district through the, you know, the supplement that's happening. But we think there should be a net benefit, but we won't really know until we get through the, kind of the initial zoning and, and the nexus basis that, that we would do with this report that's being prepared.
Just one question then, do we expose ourselves, maybe this is for Robin, do we expose ourselves once you've done the work, because then you're going to have a broader definition, understanding that there may be some imbalance, and you know, but this was, you know, pre-218, but once you've begun to go down this road, do you then expose yourself, you know, even if you chose not to do anything, that at some point in time, you know, people could raise the issue now, but they don't have the, we're going to prepare the data, and we're going to do the engineer's estimates and whatever else go into that, at least preliminarily. What does that open us up to from the standpoint of folks who, you know, again, road fund's putting in a whole lot of money covering all of the areas, but it sounds like it's more disproportionate in other areas than counting up. But again, this wasn't something that people took on, and you know, we imposed this as a part of the development approvals over the course of, you know, 25 or 30 years, so.
Yeah, I would just say that at the moment, the exposure is more financial than legal.
Yeah.
What it would expose is the burden that the general fund has accepted.
Yeah.
And then for the fix, it would be how the zoning is verified and, and calculated.
Okay.
Yes. So you have, I think we should let you finish your slide.
Yes.
Presentation.
Okay. The passage of Proposition 218 in 1996 froze the rates or assessments that were in effect then. And for the past 20 years, the rates have not changed. In that time period, we have substantial increases with respect to water and electricity, and that is why that there is a shortfall that has been, has grown over, over the years. And over the years, again, the assess, the reserves, as well as the contribution from the road fund, have made it possible to balance the district's budget. And, you know, that's something that we have done and will continue to do until such time that we can create a better opportunity to, you know, increase the assessments. A rate increase required, a rate increase requires the approval of the benefiting property owners, consistent with the ballot protest procedure. And in order to assess the level, or levels of support for a rate increase, we conducted an opinion survey back in 2014. The survey found, among other things, that a, an increase is achievable, provided the amount of increase is modest, and if we provide sufficient or adequate public outreach. As mentioned before, the benefits collected, or the assessment collected, sorry, are not proportional to the benefits received, and under this current rated structure, a rate increase cannot be pursued. Before we can put the, a proposed rate increase to vote, we need to create a rating, rate structure that is consistent with the Prop 218, and is, you know, provides a proportionality between the benefits and, and the assessments collected. With the creation of different zones, we can then develop a strategy, as I mentioned before, for a rate increase for each zone. This approach will increase the likelihood of a successful ballot outcome. In short, the proposed district restructuring will bring the district to, into compliance with Prop 218, and it will also create more flexibility as to which zones should be considered for a rate increase and for what amount. The outreach effort can then be targeted to those, to only those zones that are being considered for a rate increase. So that's another benefit of, of restructuring the district and creating different zones. In conclusion, we're here, we recommend your authorization of hiring the consultant to create different zones and different rates, and more flexibility for the county with respect to strategies to develop, to increase assessments in the future. That concludes my presentation.
Are there any additional questions? I have one, and that is, the Gold River Station site, I would like to know what year that was developed, because I'm thinking it was after 1996, after Proposition 218 passed, so it...
Put the map back up.
Yes. That was the, yeah, the page with the map. Oh, now it's on the...
It is now there.
Yeah, it's the, but it's hard to see, it was easier to see it on your overhead, actually. Because it's labeled, the, that's...
Bottom right.
Right. And I'm thinking that that is newer than 1996.
I was on the board with this.
Okay. Because I don't think those houses are 20 years old, so I'm not sure why that wouldn't, if it was, or approved after 1996, why it wouldn't have had a provision for periodic fee increases.
I think I, the answer to that is that the district went through different consolidation at different times, and in doing that, it kind of locked us in to go with the rest of the district. And if you, if Hardee or Brett, you have more information about this, you know, this is a specific question as to why we haven't been able to increase the assessments for that area alone, do you know?
Yes, I think in this case, the Gold River subdivision was annexed to the zone for the SCLMD between, somewhere between '96 and 2004, so it had to be accessed at the 4250 per parcel. And it was included in that district. At the time, the other CFD that we have with appropriate assessment rates, or rates that fund the, the services and the benefits, there was no CFD available. So at that point, we would have annexed this to Zone 4, even though it may have been slightly underfunding the cost of the maintenance, based on the current assessment in the Zone 4.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Peters.
Thank you. Back to the map, the things that you've named them, are those a street?
No, those are the neighborhoods that are within the district right now. The 14 residential areas or neighborhoods that are in the district right now.
I just, I don't recognize most of the names. The map really has me kind of in a questioning frame of mind. I don't, you're unable to explain what the different colors mean, and, I mean...
I think those are subdivision names, right?
Yeah, but I tried that on, but I don't, I mean, a lot of these little tiny dots are in my district, and I just don't recognize the name of the subdivision. Doesn't mean that isn't what they are, but...
Would we like to bring this back in our next...
I'd like a better map.
At our next meeting with, with those questions answered.
Could you do it at two? I mean, can you move that fast?
I think our next meeting is actually, is it two weeks from now, or three?
It's two weeks from, on March 8th.
Okay. Is that possible?
We'll be happy to do that, yes.
Okay. Then, is there a motion to continue the item?
I'll move to continue to March 8th, is there a time?
We need one.
I don't have a time right off the bat.
We, it should be able, we should be able to do this in probably less time with the questions asked in advance.
Correct.
Madam Clerk, how about 11:30?
Let me just double-check that.
Madam Chair, I would second that, but I just, I had one question I punched up here that, actually, just a follow-on to the Gold River Station, and this highlights the significance of some of the decisions that were rendered, because when we had that discussion, there's the interface between the M2, the heavy industrial, and light industrial properties, and there was a large landscape buffer that was required on Pi Rites and Amalgam Way as a part of that. And it was, you know, it had some slope to it and so forth. And the idea was, is that you would have this, you know, this interface between new housing, and, and so it wasn't just a streetscape. I mean, that was important, but it was also had a functionality, and maybe the case with some of these others as well. And so it's not, not that we're not going to maintain them, but, you know, the, the idea was that these were done for a reason, some mostly for aesthetics, but there were some other considerations, and I even think about another one on this as well. And so that all goes into why this board, maybe it looks like a shotgun effect, and we just took it kind of willy-nilly, but it wasn't. There were, you know, reasons why, both aesthetically and sometimes from the interface of uses to hopefully have better buffers between uses, and that was part of the original conversation with the Gold River Station, for example. So it's obviously in Ms. Glash's district now, but it was in District 5 at the time, so. Anyway, but I support the motion, putting it over and bringing a better map back. I think that would help with the explanation and understanding behind this.
We have no one signed up to speak on the item. We have a motion. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. See you in two weeks. Next item.
Item number 40 is the Northeast Bradshaw Project, request for a large lot tentative map located on the northeast corner of Bradshaw Road and Florin Road intersection in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Good morning, members of the board. You have previously heard this item on December 8th and January 12th, so we are here for final action on the map on the Northeast Bradshaw Project. We do not have a PowerPoint today, because you've already considered this item. I did want to note, for the record, that Condition 48 reflects the board's direction on some changes, and also that the Police Services CFD is new and will be incorporated into the final set of conditions. And we are also looking to make sure procedurally that we always have those conditions in the right places.
Mr. Natoli?
Yes, just on that last one, and I know there was some follow-up based upon questions from board members in briefings yesterday on the Police Services CFD and its application both to Northeast Bradshaw and to Alverta Park. And I guess it really piqued my curiosity that, you know, this condition has the ability to pay the cash sum, but how is that calculated when you have an indefinite period of time, and it talks about discounted rate, and again, I, and it'd have to be a pretty, pretty big number.
I had the same question, Mr. Davison, if you'd like to come to the podium. I read your response, but I'd appreciate it if you could explain, give a further explanation.
Sure.
This is new. We've never, we've not seen that language before, and when we've, on this condition.
Sure. So when the Police CFD was formed, the condition was developed, and at that time, it didn't include the alternative, so you're certainly correct about that. Since that time, I think county staff has been advised that, that conditions that didn't offer an alternative that basically forced somebody to vote yes in election have been successfully challenged. And I think we've also been advised that if there's an alternative, which the equivalent alternative in this case is either, you know, you annex to the CFD to pay ongoing for these police costs, or, you know, you can pay a lump sum, if you will, that would have that same effect. So the alternative basically says, as an alternative, if you choose not to annex the project to the Police CFD, then you can pay the, basically the present value of the tax streams for those projects. Nobody's chosen the option, and like you said, it hasn't been always conditioned, you know, so it hasn't come up in that many cases. Probably most projects...
That, for, when it's in perpetuity.
When it's in perpetuity, there's our engineering and economic formulas that you can calculate very easily, knowing the discount rate and the, the tax for the, for a single, for a lot. You can calculate the present value of a perpetuity. Basically, those cash flows that are 50 years into the future, the value of those cash flows is very, very diminished, but there's a way to certainly calculate that.
Which is how?
Yeah, I want to know.
We wanted the equation.
Can you do this one in your head?
We want the equation.
You know, that one I can't do in my head. But I would be happy to maybe either follow-up on that, because I'm...
An equation?
I believe it is an equation. HP calculators also do a fine job of calculating it as well.
I want to see it written out.
Okay.
Well, is this the first time we're applying it in this format?
It's the first time I've seen it.
I mean, I believe, it's certainly the first time I've remembered it being questioned, but I believe other conditions on other projects have had it as well, but it's relatively new, when you, if we're going back to 2005 versus today. But having an alternative on conditions that require developments to annex to districts and such, that is something that certainly in the early 2000 wasn't part of the mix, but it is something that's recommended today.
Well, let me just follow on. I mean, I am curious as to how you calculate some sort of an actuarial computation that says, takes it to affinity, or perpetuity, or however you want to define that, and you get some discounted value for that, or accounting for inflation, or whatever else. But I guess my, my question goes into the heart of why this was put in place. It was to supplement patrol services in the incorporated area, recognizing that housing, at the time, this was calculated and all the discussion led up to it, didn't, you know, at least as it was stated, it wasn't paying what the cost of was to patrol, you know, provide adequate staffing in the unincorporated area of the county. And so, and I know I've asked this certainly to Mr. Gill in our budget sessions that we have, that this is a, and hopefully it's in each year's budget now that shows the amount, because it will increase annually, the number. But if somebody chose to pay this all at one time, whatever the number was, then who's the holder of the money, and does it get apportioned out in perpetuity on an annual basis? Does it accrue interest? Does it accrue interest? Because, again, the idea is that it's supposed to annually be a part of the supplemental budgeting for Sheriff Services in this county, in the unincorporated area. And so, I guess, I'm curious as to, if somebody chose this, I mean, again, if it was a viable number, maybe they would, I don't know. I can't imagine that that number's going to be anything but very big, but at $300 a lot, apportioned over, it was more than 50 years, perpetuity is more than 50 years. Hopefully, people will be around 50 years from now and beyond. So, I guess I'm, you presented some other questions. Legal challenge aside, is that, I mean, I think it gets kind of beyond the intent a bit, and then how is it administered if somebody chose it, I guess? And so if you're going to have a report back, Bob, again, that's not for you to answer all those things, but to me, this is the first time we've ever had this discussion since we actually instituted this.
Sure.
Is it a legal requirement, you're saying, to have an alternative to be able to pay in cash?
It's my understanding that it makes the condition more legally defensible.
County Council is nodding.
But if it's a, if Police Services requirement is a requirement of the approval of the map, why isn't that defensible?
All I can say is that, and I'm not a lawyer, so, but, and I don't know if council wants to weigh in, but I believe there's cases that have, or there are conditions that have been successfully challenged that didn't offer such an alternative that basically required a certain vote by having that condition on the project.
That's exactly right.
If you get closer to the mic.
Prior case authority, when, when the condition is written with, set in stone and no alternative, that the courts have said that wasn't properly analyzed in the if-then analysis. I think the legal consideration for how that money would be retrieved, mindful of binding future boards, but here, Police Services being a constitutional officer of the sheriff to commend any prisoners presented to him, I would think you could structure some kind of funding mechanism that assures those funds would go to that purpose in that perpetual funding stream. But I thought it's a lump sum.
Yeah.
It would come in a lump, but it would be, it would be required to be maintained for that purpose. Paid out over time to the, presumably, the sheriff's department.
For the delight of the sheriff, yes.
So Britt is creating a new line item up there while we're speaking, that, Fern, and do we have to determine what's infinity? I mean, is it 1,000 years?
He said 50.
I don't think 50 is the right number.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, that's where we have the biggest problem, is in our older subdivisions.
I don't know.
One day, those are going to be older subdivisions.
Right. We won't, might not, well, Don will still be here.
We will, funds come in, we will hold them, lack for better expression, trust for Sheriff Service. As Supervisor Natoli said, every year when we bring you the budget, there will be appropriation in there that will appropriate out into the sheriff's office for the services provided.
Should anyone choose this option?
Correct. What we will have to work with the sheriff at that point is that what's the dollar amount that he or she would like at that point to appropriate out? Is it going to be for operating? Is it for capital? Those are the conversations we'll have back and forth.
It's for patrol services.
Patrol services is what it was for. But if he wants any kind of vehicles or anything, I mean, that's kind of conversations we got to have with him, but absolutely for patrol services, but we got, we got to determine what's the level of service at that point and how much we're going to take out of that pot.
If I just ask, so, right now, it's about $40,000 a year that we're generating?
Fourth, you mean, in total in the district?
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot more than that, so it's a significant amount of money, and then in the future, when all the condition development gets annexed in the Jackson Quarter and such projects come in, it's, I mean, we're getting to the millions a year.
Well, and I think maybe that's part of the, you know, again, looking at the future boards, but certainly even in the here and now, that those are conversations, because again, the idea, the intent was, is that, going back to the nexus for defensibility conditions, that, you know, obviously, the sheriff has the ability to deploy resources that are allocated in the board's budget actions, and we control the positions, but beyond that, and so I think, you know, there needs, the linkage probably is suitable for discussion, because if it's, if it's now, if we're, I think, for some reason, I thought the last number I had from UNEAB a year or two ago was like 300,000 bucks generated. If we're well beyond that, then it's a significant sum, but I think going to patrol services in neighborhoods that, you know, are in the unincorporated area, that's where it's designated to, you know, be used in entirety of the unincorporated area. So I guess probably this warrants maybe further discussion, not so much for today's purposes, but...
Yeah, we will, in our report back, we'll give you what the dollar amount is. The mechanics on this is that the money comes in right now, when you do your budget, it automatically goes into sheriff's budget, and the sheriff uses it for what, for patrol purposes. If we get the lump sum is what I was alluding to, is that then we got to have a conversation, how do we do it? Do we appropriate all at one time, which is, of course, not the scenario here, but we can, we will give you what the mechanics will look like.
Because you start using up all your forever money, you know, in lump sums, that presents another issue for somebody in the future. I mean, so I, again, I just, I think it's difficult to calculate, again, I'm going to be very interested to see how you calculate infinity in a fee.
And then if I can understand it, even when I see it.
So that's, that's key. Because Glass is going to be able to understand it, because I don't, if I support it, if she doesn't understand, I'm not going to support it, so.
I will do my best to come up with a sample calculation that includes those parameters.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion on this? No one signed up to speak.
Well, are we continuing it, are we?
That's up to Mr. Natoli.
Well, I think we can, again, the condition can be imposed, and I see Mr. Gillum approaching the podium, who represents the project.
So are we bringing, bringing back just that part?
Well, I don't know. I guess that's, you know, you're going to, the condition's going to...
Well, as far as the calculation, I mean, I don't know if that's the report back or an email that goes to board members, but...
We were going, we were, we need to discuss that, but we're, I'm thinking that most likely it's an email or receive a file to you detailing out how we calculate that.
Well, to the point that's here before us, though, we really had no discussion about this, legally defensible or not. I mean, again, that's the practical part of this, but, you know, the idea, the intent behind this, it's kind of like, you know, fast forward 10, 11 years, and now we're having alternatives, they can pay a lump sum and all that, and then we get into discussion today, which is a good one. You know, how does that apply? Again, you know, this was a significant policy decision at the time. I mean, this wasn't just something the board decided one day we were going to do. I mean, there was a lot of input from the sheriff, from citizens, and considerations that went into this, and it's important. It's important to the future residents and citizens, as well as to those that are here today. And so it has financial implications, it has resource implications, and certainly it has cost implications to the new homeowners and commercial property owners in these areas that are going to develop. And I guess, just to say that, you know, we're getting more alternatives, so it's legally defensible, I don't want, you know, not to be defensible, but a lump sum, to me, does, has some practical limitations to it. And if we're going to impose this, you know, again, I don't want to hold this up. On the other hand, and that's why I ask you, has this been applied? Is this the first time we're seeing this condition? Has this been done, if we already got some other projects that have this condition stated this way, then maybe this isn't also new, but...
I don't think ones that have come to the board, and I think they would have to come to the board because it involves a zone change.
I believe, you know, and without going back and checking, I believe maybe Quarter of the Hills, the language might be similar to that, some of the newer projects, I would have to go back and check.
If the board so desire, we can bring this out as a timed item to walk you through what the mechanics will be to calculate it, where the money will, who has custody of the money, and on the budget process, what we will recommend, how to use in the budget process going forward.
Okay, we do have a couple of people who seem to be wanting to approach...
I ask a question before you come in. Yes, thank you.
Could I ask our counsel? I assume you're the one who brought up the idea that this needs to be legally defensible?
Well, not the first, but that is the current...
So, one of the things, I guess I'd like to know, is where this was challenged in other jurisdictions. How many years did they use to calculate the term of paying cash?
I don't think what was litigated was the duration of the option, it was just that there was an option. But we'd like, I think Ms. Peters would like to know what the option consisted of.
We can check on that.
Yeah. I mean, I'd hate to go through the, have Bob calculate, you know, we pick a number, 100 years, 1,000 years, whatever it is, obviously, that changes the amount, and then have that overturn, I mean, maybe we're getting into a minutia level here, but it seems like we do a lot of that, fixing these kind of problems later.
Well, I think you're correct, and when you're doing discounted cash flows, if you go past, let's say, you know, 50 years, that, the amounts are pretty much diminished, so you don't have to do this in perpetuity, you can pick a number, and maybe in doing the calculations, I can do it in a couple different ways, that would show some various options.
So do I take from what you just said, that basically you buy your way out of it, and after 50 years, this being the number you use, but that's, that there's no calculable value beyond that, and so you just cap it?
Well, what I'm saying is that if you're doing a present value calculation of a cash stream, the year 100 cash streams are discounted till today, though there isn't, you know, this does inflate over time.
It has inflated value to it.
So that might counterbalance that. I mean, you know, until I did the calculations, I couldn't see, but, I mean, I hear the board talking about possibly limiting, so I could compare, you know, the perpetuity analysis versus, let's say, 25 years and 50 years, and that would show you the effect of...
I just don't think you should even bother with 25 or 50 years. I just, you know, that I can understand, you know, and having the money for Police Services in that, in 50, within this next 50 years, is going to be really important. And we all know how much prices go up over time, so I just, I don't think that lower number is one I would be interested in.
Mr. Gillum, did you want to address the board?
Yes, please, Madam Chair. Jim Gillum, I apologize if I look a little pale, it's not the discussion, it's the virus that I'm suffering from. I hadn't intended to speak, but I represent the applicant of this item. Not being an attorney, but having sat through a lot of discussions on projects over the years, this is a, this is a common out clause within CFDs, because what's being required of the applicant here is to waive your protest rights. And by requiring that we waive our protest rights, the option to not have to waive the protest rights, I believe, is what's been challenged, and that's where this lump sum payment comes in. Consonus CSD uses this for their fire fee language, their, excuse me, their fire CFD, which is a very similar situation. So this isn't the first time I've seen this out language. I do take exception to the idea that you are going to go outside the nexus, as Mr. Gill suggests. You have to stick to what's in the document of the CFD and how it was formed and how that funding was allocated. So we, so there is some, there are some structural things that need to get worked out, should my clients choose to take this option, but I don't see any reason why it should, we're comfortable with the language from our perspective, I know you have to be comfortable before you make a vote, however, I can point to other districts that use this very same language for the reason County Council alludes to. Happy to answer any questions.
If we should, if the board should decide to continue this for two weeks to get these answers, would that materially affect your progress on the subdivision?
Madam Chair, we've been, we've submitted this application in 2013, or 2014. I think two weeks won't kill us, however, it's not such a monumental, it just cost my client additional funds, that's okay. Yeah, he's not here today, or I'd ask him, he...
We're not debating the merits of the project itself, just some language and a condition.
Certainly, Madam Chair, I think you're going to have the same discussion on the next item as well, and so...
Right.
You know, I, again, I, I'll leave that, it's the pleasure of the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just say to Jim, the mechanics of this are important to understand, because this is the first time we've had any conversation at the board in many years on this, and to your point, certainly in relation to their project, I understand your explanations from your councils, but I want to understand, again, not just to the nexus, you raised that issue, but I want to understand how, at least, this would be calculated, because I think that the debate and discussion this board members have had here this morning, this is the first time we've really had any open discussion about this. It's appropriate, and, again, not to the unduly delay, you recognize, obviously, that, you know, weeks can, you know, add costs. It seems to me, though, the mechanics, this is juncture, we've got two, you know, general plan amendments with, you know, fairly sizable projects with them, and, you know, this is going to be applied, it's probably, you know, going to be what we're going to put in as far as the condition. But I, for one, want to understand, because we get a lot of projects coming through, and I think from the standpoint of what we do with our budget hat on and allocation of resources and the call we get for Police Services and, you know, and safe neighborhoods and so forth, I want to understand how it's going to work, because if somehow this gets steered away or in a different direction, where lump sums, people come in and they can buy their way out, and that seems to be economically advantageous, then I want to know that, you know, going in, is what that means to the long-term prospects for providing for safer neighborhoods and communities that this was entailed to be a part of. And so, again, that's, and that's not so much your issue, but I do think it's appropriate, and again, if we could do this, I would suggest two weeks, come back and maybe allow some time, not just for a consent memo, I mean, a memo, we need to have some discussion around this and some explanation, because I think it's important, not just these two projects, but to the citizens of this county, so.
Madam Chair, I just want to reflect on the record, I'm not suggesting that the nexus should be violated, I was more talking about the mechanics once the money comes in, how the sheriff is using our budgeting, not how we collect the money. I want to make sure Mr. Gillum understood that.
The nexus does include how the money gets spent and what it's collected for, that was my point, so.
I'm talking about the budgeting component, and how, once it comes to us...
Once the money gets put into trust with the county, I anticipate that it will be spent accordance with the CFD rules.
But the board just wants, is interested in seeing the mechanics of that on our end.
And if I might offer for staff the reference I made to the Consonus CSD fire, it's a relatively new, a new CFD, but it's for the same purpose, and they may have experienced potentially a commercial project buying out. In my understanding, it's not typically something that residential developers would seek to do, it would be more on the commercial side, because it has to do with the way that they structure their debt, so, anyway.
I would think it would be too expensive to buy out on a neighborhood, on a housing project, but that depends on how many years Mr. Davidson decides to present us with what infinity is.
Certainly.
A definition of infinity, good luck with that.
And I appreciate...
Typically, those things go to the homeowner on their property taxes.
Certainly Supervisor Peters, which is why, why I made the comment that I think that this would be more likely to occur on a commercial project, but I'm not precluding the fact that, again, as the County Council points out, I believe that this language gets added to these type of conditions specifically because they have been challenged successfully when there is a requirement to waive your protest rights under this type of election and your absentee DA or something that can force you into that waiver of protest rights. And I'm not suggesting that we want to go that direction at all, I'm, that's where I first encountered the discussion on this language, was in such a negotiation where our attorney advised that it, you know, the requirement to waive protest rights to join a CFD was improper, so.
This is just news to us.
Certainly, and I hate to be the one that's...
You just get to go first. So, Mr. Natoli, I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move it to a two-week thing, and maybe we have the same...
So if we're going to go to March 8th, why don't we do this in the afternoon at 2:30? Are you okay with that? After the workshop that we have?
Just, one moment.
We'll go to 3:00.
3:00, okay. 3:00 PM on March 8th? Okay. Mr. Johansson, you signed up on the next item, did you wish...
Yes, because this item directly also impacts Alverta Park.
Right.
And so if I may speak at this time on this one item, I would sure appreciate it.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to say, a lot of what...
I'm sorry, if you're speaking for item number 41, I do need to swear you in, it's a different entitlement.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Oh, thank you, go ahead.
Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, please state for the record that you've been sworn.
I have been sworn. Edward Johansson, President of Silverado Homes, thank you, Madam Chair, board. I was going to comment on a couple of the same things that Ed Gilliam said, so I agree 100% on that. I wouldn't speak to, though, the practical aspects, and we also have a similar kind of situation that we implement when we have environmental mitigations, and we have to fund that in perpetuity. And what we do is we put up an annuity fund, we basically put up a principal amount of money, which then earns sufficient interest together with sufficient principal for compounding that interest for inflation to allow in perpetuity that amount to be maintained. So it's, as opposed to doing it on a present value all the way back, it's a... So, it's, as opposed to doing it on a present value all the way back, it's a earmark of a sufficient amount of capital that then, based on a very conservative interest rate, can provide the same stream of income in perpetuity to maintain the asset. In this case, it would be maintaining the police services. I will say that the reason why you don't see anybody doing that is, if you're looking at this as, let's say, a $280 annual fee, to maintain that type of annuity fund would be somewhere in the neighborhood of a, at a 2% rate, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $14,000 to $18,000 of an upfront endowment or payment. And so, as a consequence of that, you won't see any builders exercise that alternative. It's there for a legal reason, but it won't be implemented from a practical reason, because the dollar amount is so large, because our real dollars translate into what the homeowner can afford in the way of a mortgage, and even at the very, very low interest rates we're at today, you know, 3%, that translates to a principal amount of about $5,000. So, that's the reality to us as a builder of the impact of it, and so we would not ever go forward with doing a $15,000 or $20,000 upfront endowment, because it would effectively cost us almost three to four times as much an amount to do that alternative. So, I just giving that as a real practical on both sides of the equation, and if that helps with your deliberation here, I would very much appreciate it. We are a bit against, as far as our project, against the timeframes, because we've gone at risk with improvement plans in order to meet this season, and in order for us to record our financing, we have to get through on the appeal period, it's a 90-day appeal period, and that puts us right into the middle of May, and we have, you know, the window of opportunity for construction. So, timing is critically important to us, so I hope you would consider that in your deliberations on this point. And any questions at all, I'd be happy to, but it is, it is an easy one to implement.
Well, thank you for your comments. Obviously, we, I think the board needs to treat both projects the same, because they have the same condition, and we appreciate that information, but we, I think, are still looking to our staff to tell us how, their recommendation for how we would handle this, which it sounds like there's a couple of different ways.
We'll bring it back in two weeks.
Okay, so we still have the motion before us on item 40. If there's nothing further, please vote.
Did we get a date, I mean, a time?
Yes, 3:00 PM on March 8.
Okay.
Unanimous vote. I'm sorry, who made the second on the motion to continue this?
Who did make the second on the motion?
Oh.
Mr. Kennedy.
Just say Kennedy.
Or we could watch the video, one or the other.
Thank you. Item number 41 is the Elvera Park project, request for a tentative subdivision map, special development permit, and design review at 2850 Elvera Road. This is in the Antelope Community, the environmental document is an addendum to the 2008 Final Environmental Impact Report.
As with the prior project, your board heard this on December 8th and January 12th, we have corrected condition number 24, and it has the same police services sheriff CFD condition on it. And the applicant, Ed Johansson, was prepared to speak, but he may have already done that on the last item, so I don't know if he has anything else to add.
We'll ask him if he wants to speak again. Any questions for Leanne? Ms. Peters?
I guess, actually, for Robin.
Oh, okay.
Could, could the developer make his decision right here, in, on camera, that he was going to not pay in cash? I kind of feel like he might. I mean, could, is that legal to do it that way?
You could get that information from him, yeah.
But would it hold?
Would it be?
I mean, could he make his election right here, right now? I guess that's what I'm saying, asking.
I don't know. I don't.
I mean, it would, it would be in the record, I don't know that.
I don't know how legally binding that would be.
There is no final map yet. I don't know if that matters either.
Yeah, it would be like a letter of intent, his, his representation.
I mean, I'm hearing from the applicants that time is beginning to be of the essence here, and it just occurred to me, maybe they could make their election today, and if there's a letter of intent.
Well, that could certainly be received, and then acted upon at the time that the documents are finalized.
So a verbal statement here on the record, would, would that, that's sworn in?
If you wanted in writing, do we still have an afternoon item?
Could be done.
Oh.
We do have an afternoon item.
So, you're all talking at one time, so.
We could come back this afternoon if we could get a letter from.
And that would apply to item 40 as well? We could revisit item 40 if that developer also wants to do the same thing?
I think we're on 41 at this point.
We're asking about going back.
I'm asking if we can revisit item 40 as well, if, if that developer is interested.
That applicant indicates that he does not have his client here, so he would probably not be able to.
He's got three hours to get ahold of him.
By 2 o'clock, perhaps. I'm talking about at 2 o'clock, not, or this afternoon, not right this moment.
Are you okay with a two-week continuance?
I can call.
Well, and if he doesn't, you've got a time in two weeks.
Right, right. I'm just giving the opportunity.
Yes, I think he would like that opportunity, so if we could go to this afternoon, and then see what we can work out. I mean, that would be great.
So.
It's weird, but I'm, got to solve this.
No, I think that was a great suggestion. If no one else has anything else to bring up, then we will hold this item over, item 41 over till 2:00 PM, and have the opportunity to revisit item 40 as well, if that developer so desires.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Thank you. And the last item for this morning.
Okay, so for item number 42, I will need a motion to drop the Willowood Cottage's tentative subdivision map amendment. This is a request for a tentative subdivision map amendment to delete condition of approval for number 29 from a previously approved tentative subdivision map at the northwest corner of the intersection between Iona Way and Summer Sunset Drive in the South Sacramento community.
Mr. Kennedy, or Ms. Moffett?
I have nothing to add, other than, staff is recommending the item be dropped.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Well, we've sort of completed the morning.
The Twilight Zone.
The morning agenda, with items 12, 41, and possibly item 40 coming back, we will recess into closed session at this time, and return it 2:00 PM.